Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We will have the invocation by Pastor Jerry Anderson, who is also chaplain of the Clayton County Police Department, be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Let us bow our heads. Our Father in Heaven, tonight we once again come to say thank you for another moment and opportunity just to call upon your name. We thank you for this glorious time to be here tonight. And Father, as we pray, we pray for our Chairman and our Commissioners. We pray for all those who are here tonight to witness what's about to take place. We pray, God, for your wisdom and your knowledge and your understanding. We pray for the protection of your people. We ask for, God, that you be ever so merciful to all of us tonight, that you will keep and watch us. Not only us, but over our county and our surrounding counties. We pray, God, for this massive of people that we are bound to pray for each and every day. Now, God, as we prepare to go into this meeting, we ask for your wisdom and your knowledge and your understanding. We pray, God, that those who come forth, God will come with a mind of integrity to speak about what's taking place in their lives. And for that, we say thank you. Now, God, we ask all of these, in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the July 5th, 2017 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
I do. I have two resolutions that I would like to add to the agenda. They were not added originally because of the transition of the legal department. However, because it is time-sensitive, the event's going to be July 22nd and August 5th, it wouldn't give us time to put it on the next meeting in order to secure everything that we need to, to make it a success.
What are they?
It's just a back-to-school for Ms. Martha, but they're in front of you, and with the STEAM event, August 5th. Asking for it to be added. It's just the use of the facility in the both organizations. Ms. Martha's is Amazing Grace. They already do it. They've already been doing it. Our police department's been supporting them, our sheriff department. However, they were having the event in a very small area that was not conducive for us to be there. So, we are having it at the Independence Park, which gives us more space and it's safer as well. And then the other is the...
Say it again now? Do we have a meeting on the 18th?
We do, but the one is on the 22nd. And I don't want to run into any issues with using county, any of the county resources in any way.
I think the 18th comes before the 22nd.
But it wouldn't give us enough time to be able to work with the organization to solicit. If the attorney says that we can move forward and with acting on it in absence of the resolution, that's fine. But I like to err on the side of caution.
And I understand what you're saying on the 1. And that one can be added for the 18th, the one that has it on the 22nd. This other one is before the 22nd.
No, the eight, both are before the, after the 18th. But this one is July 22nd with Martha. So, that wouldn't give us enough time. The 18th only gives you a few days to prepare.
The other one's August?
The August 5th.
Could that be added as a non-emergency at the next meeting?
Well, we have time to add it regular for the next meeting. I just don't want to use any county resources without going through the proper channel.
Right. Mr. Hancock, hold on a second. Hold on. So, Mr. Hancock does ask, constitutes an emergency ought to be added if we have enough time for the next meeting? She's looking at it from the perspective of preparation.
Sure. And I, from what I heard her say, the paperwork in your mouth, 2017...
I'm sorry.
...could wait for the next meeting. That's the one that's not until August. Is that right?
It could, but if...
But it's going to be the same, it's going to create the same problem.
Correct.
I mean, if it's going to impair their ability to do it, then I think legally it would constitute an emergency if you wanted to choose for it to be that way.
And you're saying it will impair the organization's ability to present...
Correct. And let me say this real quick. I don't want to belong it. But originally, I'd asked for it to be on this agenda, but with the transition of the legal department, I told Shalonda it was fine to put it off to the 18th. However, in preparing it, I just, I felt like we needed to go ahead and have it done in enough time.
Okay, she has that in form of a motion. Oh, go ahead.
So, item number 13 is a request from the Senior Services Department regarding a grant that they're asking to be removed.
All right, let's take Commissioner Warner's motion first to have these two added. Sucking that motion. Are there any other concerns or questions in reference to them? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Going back to the item, I placed that in form of a motion, item 13 to be removed, which is the aging grant from the ARC, I believe. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Hearing none.
Aye.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
And can we remove the appointment to the Atropolis CID, the appointment?
Second.
All right, probably move to second. Any questions? I have a question. Why are we holding it?
So, I can get the information for the person from Mr. McDowell.
Okay, is this a full board appointment or is this your appointment? Says full board appointment.
It is, but that airport CID, Commissioner Harvick's been working...
Well, I didn't, I don't have a problem with holding, but I'm going to be fair enough to ask if anybody else had an appointment, since it is a full board appointment, to ask the question. But hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Any others?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I'd like to remove items 17 through 20, the board appointments to Development and Redevelopment Authority.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions? The question again is why are we continuing to hold week after, meeting after meeting, the Development Authority Board Appointments?
Mr. Chairman, the board, the previous board chair quit abruptly without notification. The audit had delayed accounting. The audit was completed in the last day of the fiscal year. There is a pending retreat with Clayton State University Business Management that's pending some dates and some consensus of the board. And new officers have been elected. We're trying to get our feet before we, well, there's a lot of new cooks in the kitchen as it is. We've only had one meeting. The next meeting isn't scheduled till later this month.
Commissioner Warner.
How are you able to operate? Do you all have a quorum with that many people off the board?
Yeah, and I'd allow, I'm just answering his question for the motion that was seconded.
Yeah, but she had a question.
But the point...
Is there a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
How many are on the board total?
Seven.
There are seven on the board. How many sitting on the board at this time?
Four.
Three or four? Is it three?
Four.
They continue to serve until they are replaced.
No, they resign.
They resign, so they're no longer on the board.
Yes, they resign.
So, then my question is, how can we move forward with the board and appoint officers if you don't have a full functioning board, though?
Back to my answering every question, there are a seven-member board with four. And there are four sitting.
Present, okay.
All four are officers.
Well, at some point, when we do appoint the other three, you're still going to have newbies on the board anyway. So, why not orientate everybody at the same time, as opposed to waiting and waiting and waiting to add new members on?
I don't have all the answer to all those questions. I'm learning as I go. Like I said, we had one meeting with no institutional background. So, with that, I'm making, I'm sticking to my motion that I'm not ready to move forward on that.
Any other?
I have a question. Is this coming from the, what is it, the consulting company of the board? What do they have to say? Do they come to meetings?
What consultant?
The consultant for the board.
She has a right to ask a question. Are you calling them to question?
Because we have a consultant for that board.
I'm calling the motion.
Okay, no problem.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Three to a passes. Any others?
Just have a question. I know Mr. Hodges sent out an email about the Recreation Advisory Boards here. And I didn't ever get clarification on that. It was my understanding that those appointments were running concurrent with Commissioners. And I didn't get an answer as to who, why are we replacing these Advisory Board members?
First of all, Commissioner, I apologize that you didn't get an answer to that question. One of the appointments comes from a recommendation from the Director of the Department. I believe the feeling of Todd Nichols would constitute the feeling of that position. Ms. Williams' position, I think it is a board appointment. I'll certainly confirm that, so if you feel comfortable tabling that, we can hold off until we get further clarification.
Do you know if Ms. Williams, is that a full board or is she, was she appointed by a Commissioner?
I believe she was appointed by a Commissioner, if I'm not mistaken.
I would like to hold that one until we get clarification on that particular one, so that we won't get it mixed up.
Not a problem.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Any others?
Are there any further amendments?
Hold on, Madam Clerk.
Adding the paralegal.
Did we get paperwork on it?
On what now?
That's what you gave me? I left it in the office. Okay, I would like to add to the budget, I mean, to the agenda. A request, which is a budget amendment to transfer the paralegal position up in the legal department to the police department at the same pay class rate. Is there a second?
You say the paralegal?
Yeah, paralegal position that's up in the legal department now that will not transfer over with Mr. Hancock's.
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing none, may we have your motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
So moved, Mr. Chair, with the adopted amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Approval of the June 20th, 2017 Regular Business Meeting amendments.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? I'll suck in it. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
The board will now hear a presentation by Landry Murkison, Fire Chief, EMA Director, on the Public School Recruit Program, as well as an operational update.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the time tonight to come before you and introduce a new collaboration between CCFES and the Board of Education. However, before I get into that, COO of Stanford has asked that I just provide you a brief operational update on some key initiatives that we have going on and then how those initiatives align with the six strategic pillars that the board has adopted as a part of their plan. If you'll indulge me, I'm going to read this, so I can make sure I'm under the five-minute time limit.
Three.
Three minutes.
It's two.
I read fast, so, five included questions. First, under fiscal responsibility, the department continues to be fiscally conservative and is managing its allocated resources in an effort to address a rapidly increasing call volume. Last year, the department answered a record 40,769 calls for service. And this year, we are on a pace to answer well over 44,000, which represents an increase of 8.4%. My staff and I are constantly evaluating new technologies and methodologies in service deployment in an effort to further streamline our operations and create efficiencies that will have a positive fiscal impact. One such effort is our new records management system coming before you tonight that will greatly enhance our system analytics capabilities, as well as provide streamlined mandatory reporting to the state of Georgia through the Georgia Emergency Medical Service Information System, as well as the National Fire Incident Reporting System. Additionally, this new system will reduce the amount of time needed to complete both patient care and fire reports, allowing for faster incident spend times and a reduction in overall system saturation. Next, under governance. You're all aware of the department's new ISO rating, which places Clayton County among the top 2% of all fire departments in the country and sends a firm signal to our constituents that you place their safety as a top priority. The next major milestone for the department is accreditation through the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. Accreditation is a comprehensive self-assessment and quality improvement model that enables organizations to examine past, current, and future service levels, community risk factors, and mitigation strategies, internal performance and quality improvement metrics, and then compare them to community expectations and current research and industry best practices. There are nearly 28,000 fire departments registered with the U.S. Fire Administration. Of those, only 233 have achieved accreditation. Of those, only 142 are career fire departments. After a two-and-a-half-year process, which culminated in a week-long site visit by an independent panel of five fire service experts from across the country, CCFES has been recommended for accreditation, and our status will be confirmed at a hearing on July 28th in Charlotte, North Carolina. This will place CCFES in the top 0.005% of all career fire departments in the country and one of only 50 to obtain accreditation and a Class 1 ISO rating. Finally, we move to growth management. For this section, I would like to recognize some special guests who are present with us tonight. We have several members of the Board of Education and their staff present. If they will please stand and be recognized. Thank you. Specifically, I would like to recognize Dr. Ebony Chilis, Coordinator of Career Technical and Agriculture Education, and Dr. William Green, Principal of Mondays Mill High School, who served as an integral part along with Commissioner Gregory and the team that put this program together. CCFES, like all area fire departments and public safety agencies, continues to experience difficulties in finding quality candidates that can successfully pass all phases of the hiring process. Currently, it will take a pool of 500 applications in order to fill a class of 30 candidates. CCFES runs an attrition rate of approximately 10% per year across all categories of retirements, resignations, terminations, and those who fail to meet the minimum job requirements. Three years ago, I decided there had to be a better way to recruit and hire employees that would culminate in tenured employees that stay for a career in Clayton County. Being a proud product of the Clayton County School System and graduate of North Clayton, I wanted to develop a relationship with the school system for recruiting, training, and hiring employees from within the county. Multiple attempts to get this program off the ground were unsuccessful until this group was assembled, which without the help and dedication of Commissioner Gregory would not have been possible. Even though she did not feel well and was in the middle of her treatment, she never missed one of our 8:00 AM meetings, which she coordinated, and often made them on Fridays, so Dr. Green would bring us bagels. Tonight, myself and these dedicated professionals stand before you and proudly announce that beginning in the fall, Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services will fully integrate its recruit academy into the public school system and begin training the future of our fire service in the county. In the few moments, you will be asked to approve an MOU, which the BOE will be considering at their July 31st meeting, that will help solidify this arrangement and set us on a path to do what no other county has done. Beginning in the 11th grade, selected students for the Fire and EMS Pathway will learn from some of the country's best firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics as they are trained in the latest advancements in firefighting and emergency medical services delivery. They will be mentored in every aspect, from job interviews to life decisions that can affect deployment. At the end of their journey, not only will they have a diploma from CCFES, but they will also, I mean, from CCPS, but they will also be state-certified firefighters, basic EMTs, and to accompany their diploma, a formal offer of employment with CCFES. This innovative approach to workforce development will change the way CCFES hires its employees moving forward. Every June, CCFES will have a pool of 30 to 35 students who are trained and eager to begin their career, eliminating the need for a costly and time-consuming hiring process. This program, along with the educators of the Clayton County Public School System, will provide these students with the prerequisite knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to exit high school with a diploma, a career, and a salary that is paying them right at $41,000 a year, with the potential for additional incentives for continued educations and certifications beyond the initial training. I thank you for your time and welcome any questions of the board.
Chief, let me say this. Thank you, and the Commissioner, and everybody else involved in this innovative initiative. It really is going to make a difference in a whole lot of people's lives and start to develop quality candidates in which we want part of our Fire Services Department serving the citizens here in Clayton County. Are there any other statements or questions for the Chief?
Yes, Mr. Chair, also, I wanted to recognize Dr. Green, Dr. Chilis, Mr. Gani, and guests along with, excuse me, board members Jessie Goree, Mary Baker, and Dr. Adamson. And I know you all haven't approved this yet, so, but we'd like for you all, if anybody can just say something, please, feel free. This is an exciting program for us. I know one of the things I constantly hear from citizens, and they ask, why can't we get this restaurant? Why we can't get that store? And of course, we all know some of our challenge is employment in the county. And this is a way, we are actually growing our own, you know, employment base here. We're developing our own workforce, and it's an exciting program. And I hope the Board of Education members here, I hope you all will approve it. So, Dr. Green or Dr. Chilis, or, okay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, again, as a representative of Clayton County School System, I know that you will be voting on the MOU later on today. And I know that our board formally will be introduced to the plan. But I'd like to just thank the Fire Department, Ms. Gregory, Commissioner Gregory, and everyone who's played a part in this, because at the end of the day, our children are the number-one resource. And I think that this is a unique partnership that hopefully will be a trendsetter for other counties around the state and eventually around the country. But the Fire Department is doing outstanding work under Chief Murkison. And again, I think it was more than just the bagels. I think he really was thinking about the future of the county.
I know that Dr. Chilis, come on up, Ms. Goree, and while she's coming, I know Dr. Chilis said she didn't want to speak and say anything, but she has worked so hard to align this with the state-required curriculum in the school, along with the Fire Department and her staff. And this was not just the easiest task, because all the educators know, everything has to be aligned with the curriculum. And so, I, just really a proud of Dr. Chilis and her staff for all the work they've done with this. Mrs. Goree?
Well, I was waiting for the Chair to come up, but I, since I do come to the commission meeting, and usually, I'm here for other reasons.
Absolutely, ma'am. We appreciate you being here.
It's good to come here tonight and be in favor of something, and I just want to...
Awesome, thank you.
I want to come and thank you all for the collaborative effort with the Clayton County Board of Education. It's a new day in Clayton County Public Schools. We have a new superintendent. And it's time that we have these collaborations and we all work together, because as the two biggest employees in the county, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, we need to come to work together. And always, we need to put children first and put our community first. So, I applaud you, and especially you, Commissioner Gregory, for working with our dear friend over here, wow, Bill Green. That's what I call him, at Mondays Mill High School. Thank you all so much for the opportunity. And I'll just say right now, you will help my vote at the, at the end of the month. So, I'm sure it'll be unanimous. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And Dr. Green, let me say this. You've lost some hair since the last time I seen you. So, I just want to say, welcome to the club.
He was prepared for this night. Would you come with you? That's it.
I just want to say, as the Commissioner of District 3, where the school sits, congratulations. I'm excited about this. I remember two years ago, about three years ago, calling and seeing this program in Florida, and it's also in Los Angeles. And so, it's good to be able to see our students being able to participate in such a wonderful program. So, I want to commend you, as well as the school system and Dr. Green. You all are wonderful. Thank you. Awesome job.
Any other question statements?
And if I didn't clarify, this will be going on at two high schools, both Charles Drew and Mondays Mill. So, all of those students will come to our training facility for two hours a day, and then they'll go back to school.
Wonderful.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
The board will now...
Can I say one more thing? Can I just put it on our minds, since we're at Charles Drew, maybe we can think about a medical program over there? Just perhaps.
What about Charles Drew?
A medical program. We got some doctors that are interested.
Madam Clerk.
The board will now consider the request of Director of Central Services, Carol Rogers.
Please take them together, Ms. Rogers, unless a board member wants to single one out. Hearing none, please proceed.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I have four items to present on behalf of Central Services tonight. The first one is a recommendation for annual contract amendment, RFB 15-32, which is medical supplies for Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services. It is an annual contract. The recommendation is to amend the multi-award contract to add and remove items and approve price increases. The Board of Commissioners approved the award on May 17th, 2016. And also, I wanted to make a correction. I gave you all a copy of a revised memo. We had on there one item, which was number 118, which is for nasal device. We were going to give that to another company, Nashville, but we were able to leave that with the original vendor, who is J. M. V. Medical Supply Company, without a price increase. The next item is recommendation for award of RFP 16-42. This is for the Enterprise Resource Planning, the ERP system for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation for award is to the most responsive and responsible proponent, meeting the specifications for timekeeping management and scheduling management solutions, which is Cronos, Inc., located in Clemson, Massachusetts, in the total amount of $879,909.25. Funding is available through the 2015 Spots Funds. Next item is request for a sole-source award for the purchase of the Image Trend Software Licensing, that is for the Fire Department. It is a recommendation to award this to Image Trend, who is located in Lakeville, Minnesota, in the total amount of $210,570. Funding is available through the Fire Department of the Contract Service Funds Fee. And next item is recommendation for award of RFB 17-106, which is resurfacing of tennis courts for the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department. The recommendation is to award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Net Results Sports Marketing, Inc., located in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, in the amount of $92,284, with the ability to purchase options as the budget will allow. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation General Park Improvement Spots Fund. My request is for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the Chairman, his designee, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now consider the request of Chief Financial Officer, Ramona Bivens.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners. I have three budget amendments and one request for refund for your consideration.
Take them together.
Thank you. Budget Amendment 2-1 is for Federal North Carolina's Condemnation Fund, to amend in funds in the amount of $37,568 to purchase a 2017 Chevrolet Camaro for the Sheriff's Office. Budget Amendment 4-136 is for 2,000 nine Spots, to appropriate funds from fund balance in the amount of $163,000 to replace light poles in various parks and to resurface tennis courts at the International Park and Lovejoy Park. We have a request for a refund in the amount of $500. It is for... My name is not on here. Hold on. Evelyn Sawway. And it's due to the property is less than two acres and does not meet the minimum site size requirement for a CUP. And then last item is budget amendment 2-2 for the Police Department, is to amend the budget to provide funding for a paralegal senior position for the Police Department effective July 1, 2017, in the amount of $58,105.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions. There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrik. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Interim Chief Staff Attorney, Jack Hancock.
Mr. Hancock, please take them together.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two resolutions and six department requests. Resolution 2017... Resolution 2017-51 is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, to support the Back to School Bash hosted by Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner in partnership with the Amazing Grace Community Resource Center, Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department, the Clayton County Sheriff's Office, and the Clayton County Police Department, to authorize the county and its departments to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution 2017-52 is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, to support Clayton County's Hidden Figures Steam Fair hosted by Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner in partnership with the Family Youth Innovative Events and Infinity Global Connections, to authorize the county and its departments to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Item nine on your agenda is a memorandum of understanding. Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Department requests the Board of Commissioners approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Clayton County Public Schools for the purpose of establishing a partnership between CCPS and CCFES to assist in fulfilling the goals of the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act of 2006 and the Georgia Department of Education Career Technical Agricultural Education Program for preparing students for careers through enhancements to the Fire and Emergency Services Pathway, which prepare enrolled students for employment with local Fire and Emergency Services Agencies. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this request, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. The Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Department also requests the Board of Commissioners approval and adoption of the Standard of Cover Community Risk Assessment Document as part of Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services' continued efforts to gain accreditation with the Commission of Fire Accreditation International. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the request, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 11, the Clayton County Finance Department, on behalf of Clayton County Collaborative Authority, requests the Board of Commissioners accept the Family Connection Grant in the amount of $48,500 from the Department of Human Services, with no matching funds required. The grant is effective July 1, 2017, and runs through June the 30th of 2018. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 12 is a request from the Clayton County Juvenile Court that the Board of Commissioners grant authority to accept the 2017-2018 Georgia CASA affiliation agreement and contract for services for $49,283.22, with no local matching funds required. Funding from this grant will allow the existing program to continue to serve abused and neglected children, including, excuse me, involved in county dependency proceedings. This grant will also continue to support one full-time child welfare service position. The award period begins July 1, 2017, and expires on June 30, 2018. Further, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 14, Clayton County Extension Service requests that the Board of Commissioners accept a $50,000 grant from the United Way of Greater Atlanta for the Housing Initiative Program with no local match required. The grant period again is from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, and the request is that the Chairman execute, be authorized to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item 15 is a request from the Clayton County Police Department for the sale of a seized vehicle at auction. The vehicle seized is a 2001 Chevrolet Tahoe K1500 Silver in Color, VIN number 1GNK13T21R126554. Its sale is authorized by the Order of the Court in Civil Action File Number 2017, CVO184-11. The proceeds from the sale of the vehicle will be placed in the city's sharing account number 221. Further request to authorize Chief Financial Officer, Central Services, Fleet Maintenance, and the Chief Operating Officer to take all actions necessary to achieve the intent of this request. That concludes the requests.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
I do, I just have one. It's about number 14, for the United Way Hope, I'm sorry, not that one, the Clayton County Extension Service, Winston. This, um...
Please, take the podium, Winston.
And I apologize for not getting with you earlier. Just kind of wanted to just, this $50,000 grant for the housing initiative program, tell me just a little bit more what it's...
Okay, I'm sure the board is all aware that we have a very active housing program of the Extension Service.
I'm sorry, if you would, please just identify yourself for the record.
State your full name.
Sorry, my name is Winston Neeson, I'm with the Clayton County Extension Service. We have a very active housing program at the Extension Service. This grant will be used to further facilitate or outreach efforts in providing homeowner education and also to provide financial help with a certain segment of our population.
Okay, thank you. Is it also inclusive of, I know last year, Ms. Ford was very instrumental, I think I got her name right, in doing a lot of, helping us do a lot of workshops for underwater houses and so forth, is this...
That's correct. That's under the same program. Actually, I do have Ms. Ford here with me.
I'm sorry, keep my brain is real, okay? I apologize, here's the, I apologize. Thank you, that's kind of what I was getting at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Chairman, we do need executive session for litigation and real estate matters.
And personnel.
Personnel, all right, sir.
The last few items are board appointments. The first is the appointment to the Library Board to fill the expired term of Pamela Lake. The term is three years, expiring on June 3 of 2020. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Oh, I'll save that for next week, I mean, next meeting, please. I do have someone, I don't have a name.
Hold that till next meeting, please.
Yeah, but you need to, because it's an agenda, right? We need to make a motion to hold it, and I second it.
Okay.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Item number 22 is appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and this is to fill the term of Russell Todd Nichols II. The seat is vacant.
No, it's one that, I think it was clarified that the director gets to make a recommendation, and he made that recommendation, so I guess we're just...
I got you.
Yeah, that's the one, I think.
Okay.
Commissioner, let me make a clarification. Mr. Hodges did come up, come forward, and based upon the documentation he's provided, that would be an at-large appointment as well. So technically, the director would make a recommendation for the board to ratify, if this is, and my memory is bad as well.
But he could, but it's not obligatory.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so we can pick whoever, whether he does or doesn't.
But I want to provide clarification that technically, the two appointments, or at-large appointments, that based upon bylaws, the director can make a recommendation with the board ratifying, but to Commissioner Emerson's point, don't have to take that recommendation. The board can make the full appointment themselves.
What's that recommendation by the director?
What's that name?
He did two.
Well, he did, it was one, the...
Item number 22 is notated below, they're recommending Lance Clark.
Lance Clark, that's correct.
Which one was, um...
Come on up here, Mr. Hodges.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The two, the two recommendations would be a Dr. Elliot McGlory and a Lance Clark.
I don't have a problem with your recommendation. I guess my thing is, we have, it sounds like we hadn't really read about or found out anything, and so if you don't mind giving us an opportunity, again, to at least look into who the people are, my first question, are they both residents of Clayton County?
I'm not exactly sure about that, Commissioner, but I will be able to answer that.
Yeah, let's hold those, if you are board. I make a motion that we hold those until we clarify.
But I did send, make sure each of you did get the bio for each.
Yeah, we got the bio. Thank you for that. There's a motion on the floor to hold, and it's been sucking. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you.
And the last board appointment for this evening is to the Solid Waste Management Authority, and this is to fill the term of Earl Randall, who has resigned. The term is four years, expiring on July 31, 2021. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation. If he will accept my nomination, I'd like to recommend Rob Leatherwood. Sir, would you accept it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you.
If there is no further business, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude this evening's agenda. There was a request to go into executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Probably moving second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you all, and have a good evening. All right, a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, I have for your official consideration a settlement agreement between Clayton County and Emily Noel and Robert Harden, two individuals who were stopped at the airport in connection with a drug, with a drug matter. $20,200 was taken from them. It was turned over to the federal government, and they are refund, the federal government's refunding that money. The settlement of the lawsuit would call for the county to pay $10,000 to settle the claim, and that would come from drug funds, not, not out of the general fund. Take them all together.
Yeah, pick them all, take them all together.
The second item is a property damage claim. Evelyn Williams was involved in an automobile collision with a county vehicle on February the 20th of 2017, Forest Parkway and West Street. It was the county vehicle's fault, and we're recommending that that case be settled for $25,000. We have obtained information regarding the damage to the vehicle that supports that claim, and we have a signed agreement. You've already approved this, and we, you've already given us the direction to settle it for that amount, and we have the signed agreement. The third one is a settlement agreement with Mr. Ryan Hall, a former employee of the Clayton County Police Department, and that settlement arises from an incident that occurred as a result of his termination back in 2014. He is not coming back as an employee. He is being paid for back time, and he will retire. We again have, we have signed documents authorizing that settlement as well. And the final one is a workers' compensation claim. The board authorized the Human Resources Department to settle the case for up to $60,000, and they were able to settle it for that amount. And there is a settlement approval order from the State Board of Workers' Compensation. Those would be the four things that we'd ask for you to approve.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
That's all we have, thank you, sir.
A motion to adjourn.
Ten minutes.
Second, and those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Good night.